Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our Tuesday, May the 12th Agenda Session. I'll now call us to order with no objections from the Council. We'll allow the minutes to stand as read. Miss Madam Clerk, we do have one item under planning that I think we may need to go ahead and read and discuss just a little bit. If you would, let's read 6A please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance so as to rezone property located at seventy-three oh one Schallford Road from R one residential zone to C four planned commerce center zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Oglesby, I mean, how sorry, Councilman Ledford.
Yeah, we're, we're almost identical. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has a lot of moving parts. As I indicated, this was an item I actually wanted to move off of the agenda because we have not had, worked through some of the issues, including conversations with TDEC. The client has, applicant has asked me to move this to June ninth, and that's the motion that I plan on making this evening with a little bit of hesitancy.
Okay, very good. Any questions from any other Councilperson or John Bridger? Okay. Let's go ahead and, let's just, is there any other, our D annexation, Councilman Oglesby, are we good on that one?
Uh, yeah, we received an email today making that request to myself and the city attorney. So I will be making a motion to withdraw tonight at six o'clock.
Okay, very well. Let's move on to six C, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the Charter of the City of Chattanooga and all acts, ordinances, and other charter provisions and mandatory thereof, pursuant to the provisions of Article eleven, Section nine of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment, so as to change the city charter by adding a new Section thirteen point seventeen related to the establishment of a police advisory and review committee to title thirteen of the city charter.
Okay, any questions or comments? Councilman Gilbert, anything?
No, sir.
Okay. I see no hands.
I don't have any questions either, Chairman.
Councilwoman Coonrod. Okay, very well. Let's move on to resolutions under Finance, Madam Clerk, seven B, please.
A resolution authorizing the city finance officer to submit a request for change in plan operations for Mass Mutual four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan as provided in the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Development Security Act to allow for the following optional provisions effective March twenty-seven, twenty twenty.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we talked, touched on this briefly, but is, is Ms. Daisy available to kind of walk us through?
Well, see, what Councilwoman, Councilwoman Burr, you have your hand, do you have something to add to this, or?
Yes, if, if you take all of those, B, C, D, and E, it has to do with benefiting our pieces, our people relative to the cares legislation. And so I think it would be really helpful if it's, they're, they're good things, they're connected, but I think it would be helpful if Daisy explained it.
Okay, Daisy is with us. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, would you go ahead and bring?
You betcha.
Ms. Madison on.
Let me find Ms. Madison. There you go, Mr. Chair.
Miss Madison, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
All right, did you hear the question from Councilwoman?
Yes, um, the city offers four deferred compensation plans for its employees, and it's an opportunity for them to set aside dollars for retirement that is tax-free, on a tax-deferred basis. During the cor- coronavirus, just like there was a lot of legislation that impact the ability of people to use their retirement accounts without tax penalties, if you will, in a manner that would help them to deal with the coronavirus situation. So in this particular case, the CARES Act has allowed these individuals to withdraw from their accounts up to one hundred thousand dollars to be used to offset any financial difficulties they experienced during COVID. It also, if there were individuals out there that had to retire or began to withdraw their funds, but because of age, they allowed them to defer that if they're in a position to do so, to allow time for the investments to return to some normal level. And there was a, I think there's a two, two-year payback period. So it's just an opportunity for employees to use their savings to address financial difficulties.
Okay, that helps a lot, and I agree with Dr. Burr. That is a, that is a good thing for our city employees. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from Ms. Madison before we let her go?
Yeah, I've got one. And it's, it's not a question. It's Daisy, do you agree that all four, do you, you want to comment on that all four of those are related? Or do you want to comment on them separately?
All four are exactly the same. They all are subject to Internal Revenue Code, Section four fifty-seven, deferred compensation, and they're all exactly the provisions of this one.
Thanks, Daisy.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, when these come up at six o'clock, we'll, we'll, we will take them as a group. We'll obviously read them individually, but vote on them as a package.
Right.
Madam Clerk, if you would, go ahead and read C, D, and E, just to have them read into the record, please.
A resolution authorizing the city finance officer to elect optional ICMA dash RC four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan provisions to provide coronavirus-related relief is allowed by the CARES Act. D, a resolution authorizing the city finance officer to elect nationwide retirement solutions four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan provisions related to coronavirus-related distributions included in the CARES Act. E, a resolution authorizing the city finance officer to elect optional provisions that allow coronavirus-related distributions from Boya Financial four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan is allowed by the CARES Act.
Okay, any follow-up on this? If not, Madam Clerk, would you read seven F, please?
A resolution authorizing the Chattanooga Fire Department to apply for and if awarded, accept a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant supplemental opportunity, which is a special opportunity for fire departments to quickly recover costs directly associated with expenses related to COVID nineteen with the city's ten percent match in the amount of eight thousand dollars for a total amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, I didn't notice if Chief Hyman was on, but this is something that we learned about this morning at the nine-thirty meeting. It is a grant that is available. It needs to be, and there he is now. I'll just let him explain. Hey, Chief?
Hello?
Can you hear us? There we go. If you would, just explain briefly what the need for putting this on this week's agenda was. It is, it has been added, and what the benefits are, please, sir.
First of all, thanks for adding so quickly. We did get late notice that this grant was available to us, and it will actually pay for equipment that we purchased during the COVID crisis. In particular, our MSA masks, the filters that we put on for that, some of our foggers, and just any other COVID-related equipment. But it did have a deadline of tomorrow, and I just spoke with my deputy just a few minutes ago, and we did go ahead and apply for the grant already. So we're trying to stay on top of it. We just got late notice that it was available.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Chief while he's here? I did feel like this met the threshold for putting it on this week's agenda and making a special exception. Thank you, Chief, for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Well, that brings us to a departmental report. It's my understanding that we have a, and we just took him off.
I just took him off.
The departmental report on Fire today.
Sorry, Chief.
Am I back on?
You're back on, sorry about that.
I've got a note, I've got a, on my agenda that we're having a departmental report today on Fire.
Excellent. Um, can I share my screen with you?
Give me just one second, Chief.
Okay.
All right, I gotta, hey, Chief, I gotta take you out and put you right back in, give me just a moment.
While Vice Chair is doing that, let me remind everybody that we do need an attorney-client privilege meeting this afternoon, and we will need to reserve enough time, plenty of time to be able to discuss items that are on that agenda. So between four thirty and four forty-five, we need to go into attorney-client privilege. Uh, Chief, can you?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Quick, I did notice that Ms. Madison's hand was up. I don't know if that was a previous item that she needed to address. I didn't know if you wanted to, to do that real quick before we moved on. Oh, she put her hand down. Okay.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right, you got my screen up there?
Yep.
We do.
All right, I just wanted to go over, just briefly, first of all, thanks for letting us present. As you know, we've had a lot thrown at us here in the last handful of months, but I wanted to kind of touch a little bit on what all happened during the response to the East Brainerd tornado. So as you know, we had an F three really rip through not only our county, but Bradley County, North Georgia, that did substantial damage. Hundreds of power pole lines down, lots of damage to infrastructure, fiber optics, cell towers. Our radio systems were overwhelmed. It was very difficult for boots on the ground to really communicate and accountable, to keep everybody accountable. Obviously, we had limited access due to downed trees, and even lots of fire hydrants damaged or buried under debris. Not to mention the number of homes and the number of people that were displaced and the number of rescues that we had going on at the same time. So it was, it was an overwhelming event and something that is, that I think that a lot of training really helped us pull off much easier, and I'll touch on that in just a second. But we initially, right there around midnight, we responded to fourteen hundred nineteen, fourteen hundred nineteen calls for assistance through Hamilton County nine-one-one, and that was about the time that we established Unified Command at Lowe's on Gun Barrel. And having that Unified Command, and that's what I wanted to really touch on, and me and Chief Roddy were pretty much shoulder to shoulder during this entire event. And we really attribute much of the Unified Command structure in some of the trainings that we've done in the past. Previous council reports, we've talked about the integrated training that we've done for active shooter, where we've integrated through in-service to the police and the fire departments, just doing multiple trainings over the last couple of years. And me and him both made the statement almost at the same time that had it not been for those trainings, that the integration would have been much different, and may not have had the best outcome. So we really, actually this morning, we honored through an award for Sergeant Morrison and Battalion Chief May. They are two police officer and firefighter that have really spearheaded doing the integration of active shooter. We honored them this morning, and really part of my comments to them during that was that had it not been for their passion and their want to really make this successful, the integration would have been much different. And I think it's, it's always nice to see evidence of trainings that we've done and actually see direct results from that. And I really, I'm really proud of those two individuals for really pulling this off and really kind of wrapping the whole thing up. But overall, the Chattanooga Fire Department, we had seventy-three on-duty personnel with twenty-one apparatus. And just to put that into perspective, we have twenty-six fire apparatus throughout the entire city. We also pulled in seventy-two off-duty, off-duty personnel, which put us at about a hundred and five total working that incident all the way into the next morning. We did notify mutual aid, and that's the benefit of mutual aid right now. We were able to utilize twenty-one of our apparatus and a hundred and forty-five of our people and still have coverage for the rest of the city. And we did that through the mutual aid system. Local fire departments backfield all of our stations, so we, that's one of our concerns whenever we do tax our system like we did, is how do we protect the rest of the city? And prior to mutual aid, that would not have happened. We would have been, we would have left a large portion of our city exposed. So I think that's a big benefit there. We did request two strike teams. Not only did we have local departments like Red Bank, so go out in East Ridge, participate, but East Tennessee Strike Team from Knoxville, Rover Metro Knoxville, and Karnes Fire Department came down. And we also had Upper Cumberland Strike Teams that came down from Sparta, Smithville, Putnam, and Cookville. And to have that relationship with those individuals has really paid off. We used a number of those strike teams recently when we had the Tennessee American Water Brake. They were able to provide tankers. They were able to provide a whole lot of stuff for us during that timeframe. And we just hit them up again, and they were more than willing to participate. So me and a couple of the chiefs have, have some plans to go meet these individuals and really thank them for their service after the fact. Shortly after that, after we established that Unified Command at Lowe's on Gun Barrel, we did move to the Silverdale Baptist Church, which gave us a lot better venue, a lot better space, as you guys saw when you came out to visit. That's when we really, the teams were really organized, searching every structure within that tornado path. And we were able to take Chattanooga Fire and police along with those strike teams, and with our urban search and rescue team that's made up of about a hundred and forty-five members, we were able to take one person on each of our urban search and rescue teams and insert them with PD. And those individuals are specifically trained to look at collapsed structures, determine whether they're safe, to determine what the level of damage is to that. So that was a big benefit that we were able to utilize our urban search and rescue team in that format. So as we transitioned, we started making requests to Hamilton County EMA and TEMA, and all that was really to provide residents and responders with the, with our basic needs, from drinking water, restroom facilities. We had some help with some charging stations. I greatly appreciate that. Councilman Ledford, I think you helped us quite a bit trying to get those charging stations there, and that was a big benefit. Light towers, Wi-Fi trailers, generators, so we really wanted to flood the entire area, so to speak, with resources that they needed. And that's what we had to coordinate through that next phase. And that coordination is not an easy undertaking. It's a lot of resources and a lot of moving parts that happen all at once. And having that Unified Command set up, and thankful to the Silverdale Baptist Church for letting us use their facility, it really made that process much easier. We had space to do that instead of standing in the rain trying to do it on the tailgate of a truck. But we did deploy all those resources throughout that area. Salvation Army, and I thought this was a really big, big piece, they were able to provide ten thousand meals daily throughout the entire event. So a big shout out to the Salvation Army. They had representatives in the command post the entire time to make sure that they, that they were, that we were meeting the needs of our folks in our community. We also coordinated a governor's visit, as you know, and then we also coordinated you guys coming out of city council to kind of show you the affected areas, and I really appreciate everybody's participation in that. And we were happy to get you out there and let you kind of see what was going on in a much more safe and controlled environment. Another big piece that I think is important to note through all this is that on the fourteenth of April, Unified Request, Unified Command made the request of the Tennessee Disaster Mental Health Strike Team. As you guys know, when you visit the area, that's a highly emotional event. To see the level of destruction, to see the amount of people that are suffering during that event, it takes a toll on our community. It takes a toll on our responders, as you well know. So having this team in place, this wasn't a new deployment for this team. This team has been around for a little while, but our peer support team here that we started locally between the police and the fire department have really made some good relationships with the Tennessee Disaster Mental Health Strike Team. And they were really, really proactive in crisis intervention and including assessment, triage, and referrals through either Chattanooga or Hamilton County residents that were directly affected by the tornado. So you can kind of see some of the stats there. They had thirty-five strike team members deployed. Over fourteen hundred people they actually talked to, a little over thirteen hundred actual individual interventions were completed. Forty-six persons and two group interventions were done, sixty-five referrals, and almost twelve hundred hours of service provided. And I really think that's, that is something unique to emergency services that hasn't always been there in the past. I do feel like that in years past, that this might have been a piece that got maybe pushed to the side or wasn't as prevalent as it should have been. So I was happy to see that this, this kind of strike team was stood up and really provide that during this event and continued support. And I'm really proud of our, the Chattanooga Fire Department Peer Support Team in conjunction with our international providing that kind of stuff as well, and the police department does the same thing. So the peer support team from both the police and the fireside has been extremely successful in helping develop these relationships. Kind of lastly, looking here, as the, as we concluded all the search and rescues, there were a number of search and rescues of pulling people out of houses, making sure they were safe, making sure that they didn't come in contact with hot power lines. But as that search and rescue phase kind of transitioned, we moved directly into damage assessment. And most of our use our, use our team members are trained in how to do this damage assessment. And, and everybody asks, well, why is damage assessment part of the fire department's job? Well, we can actually go in there and look at these structures and determine the level of damage that they had and actually speed up the process. Typically, TEMA would bring individuals in a week or two weeks outside of when the event happens. We were able, within a couple of days, actually start, starting to do damage assessments. And we saved TEMA a lot of time by being able to perform those damage assessments. What does that mean at the end? That means that we don't have to wait on TEMA to get here two weeks later after an event's happened to do these damage assessments, and we were able to get our FEMA declaration for an emergency disaster declared much, much quicker. I think we, because we did that, that might have bought us two or three weeks of time to be able to pull that off. So I'm proud that that happened, and that really couldn't have happened. Our folks are good at doing the damage assessment, but the Office of Performance Management, the OTMOD Group, Tim Moreland and his bunch really did an outstanding job early on in the event by tracking how we were collecting all that data. And as you know, the data is extremely important, especially when reporting all this back to TEMA and back to FEMA. Without those data points, we don't get emergency declarations. And I have talked about it extensively, about really standing up the Office of Performance Management on the next large event that we get to be able to provide us that data early on. They did an outstanding job, so I was really proud of them. You can kind of see some of the damage assessment breakdown there. It just kind of gives you a breakdown of the one hundred percent all the way to zero damage. And all those numbers were used for our FEMA declaration. Kind of lastly here speaking, recovery efforts, as we continued on, you know, we went all the way. We kept the Unified Command in place until April twenty-fourth. We dealt with federal, state, and local agencies just to make, we had some jurisdictional boundaries that we didn't want to create any barriers with because we were working in the county as well. So we were, we worked directly not only with Chattanooga PD and, and Fire, but Hamilton County EMS, Hamilton County EMA provided a lot of assistance. The Sheriff's Office, this was kind of unique for us as well, when we transitioned that Unified Command from Silverdale Baptist to County Highway Department, the Sheriff's Office really stepped up as far as helping us coordinate things in the county and still utilizing Chattanooga PD. TEMA came in and helped out quite a bit. We did deploy the National Guard, as you saw. Public Works, I can't speak enough, good work about Public Works. The amount of work that they did early on was phenomenal. I would have never guessed that we would have cleared so many roads and moved so much debris in so little time. So I was extremely proud of, of the Public Works Department. And just to kind of highlight all these agencies here, including the Mayor's Office, the Mayor's Office was with us side by side the entire time during the, during their event and provided all kinds of assistance. And I just want to highlight all these agencies, the night that the tornado happened, when I was setting up command on Gun Barrel, these individuals just started showing up, ready, ready to help. So it wasn't like I had to call a whole lot of individuals to come out here and support us. Sheriff's Office was there, PD was there. I had, had an early on rep from TEMA there. Public Works was right there, asked me, what do you want me to do next? What do you want me to do next? So I can't highlight enough, out of all the agencies that are there listed, how much support we had in being able to pull this incident off and how much support there is community-wide when, when we do have these disasters. So I can't say enough good things about all the folks that helped out during this event.
Chief, thank you, thank you so much for your report. The, the training was evident, and you being a former training chief, I think that paid off in, in big dividends, and we just can't applaud you and your team and really all the first responders enough for their response to this, that disaster out in East Brainerd.
Thank y'all for your support.
Chairman.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes, sir. Phil, from everybody in the East Brainerd area, including the Hamilton County area of East Hamilton. Thank you, as it says over my shoulder, we thank you for your leadership because we know that through leadership is responsibility, and it is when this city is faced with a crisis, and unfortunately, we have had our share, we always come through these crises together, and we appreciate your leadership, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, thanks so much for your presentation, for your leadership, and, and the essence of Tom. I see no other hands, and we do have two committee meetings in front of us before attorney-client will, will move on. Thank you, sir. Do we have any purchasing questions for tonight? I see no hands. What about the May twelfth Agenda? Any questions? Councilman Gilbert?
Just on, back of the line.
Purchase, okay.
On the silence. Just bring, the scripture of what they, um, do.
Councilman, your, your microphone's breaking up. We can't. Try, let's see. Okay, what was your question?
To brief the scripture of what they, what that is. I know it's the house, but it's going to have more detail.
Is that on, did you say the second one? The land application of bio solids? I see Mr. Holland's with us. Mr. Holland?
Yes, sir. Land, I think Councilman Gilbert is speaking about the Denali Water Solutions land application of bio solids purchase.
That's correct.
Okay, that is a, a contract that, where we take all of the bio solids currently to land-apply them in, at private properties throughout Tennessee, North Georgia, and North Alabama. We would otherwise be land-filling those bio solids, but they're a beneficial use for agricultural farms that grow feedstock for their own use. We, we haul it and land-apply it to prevent land-filling it.
You, there's no liability for us on this, right? There was a stay on, on that side.
So this, this is highly regulated by the state of Tennessee, by the state of Georgia, and by the state of Alabama. We meet all of the regulations. In fact, there's a, there's a resolution item that I was going to speak about in a bit. Item J, seven J on today's agenda identifies material matters. They are bio solids data. And data cleaning systems, they help us report to the, you know, the regulatory agencies. And it's a third party that maintains our compliance with all the environmental regulations. Yes, sir.
You good, Councilman? Any, any other questions? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Justin, I never did get that contract. If you could send it to me, please.
Okay, I sure will. I think you may have gotten it from Jeff Rose, but I will, I will forward it again. I think I saw that come through to you, but I apologize if it didn't. I'll send it to you now.
Okay, thank you. And also, Chair, on the next week's agenda, under Public Works, D. Okay, thank you. And also, Chair, on the next week's agenda, under Public Works D, that is actually for District Eight, the Harriet Tubman, the removal, the sewer relocation as District Eight.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. I'll make the change.
Make that change. Thank you. I see no other hands. At this time, we will now move to let's see, council agenda for May the 19th. Any questions on the May the 19th council agenda? Councilwoman Coonrod? Question or is that previous hand?
Yeah, that was my, I gave you my question for 19, but then also, where will we get the numbers, the money amount for the debris collection under Public Works again?
Yeah, so so we'll we'll talk about that in Public Works Committee here in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions for next week's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just to note that the item of 2020-0038, I will be moving to defer that to a later date.
Very well. Okay, let me get back to my agenda. Future considerations, anything that is three weeks out or further that we have any questions about? No questions? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. So under economic and community development, a donation agreement with the Chattanooga Area Food Bank, is that property we're giving them, is, you know, is it just a free agreement with the building that they're currently in? Would they be relocating to another building?
Mr. Vice Chair, Richard Bealan has his hand up. Well, let's bring him on and see if he's got an answer for Councilwoman Coonrod.
This, Councilwoman, this piece of property is adjacent to some property that was donated to them several years back. They have a community garden on their property towards the back on the other side of the parking lot. And this is a piece of property that runs beside that that they want to utilize for for some additional programming there at the food bank.
Okay, so we making a donation for that. Okay, thank you. And then also, Chair, under finance, that we're giving amending the budget to provide the Chattanooga Zoo with $70,000 because of them being closed. Now, is this an opportunity for other businesses that we're gonna amend the budget to prepare, to provide them with additional funds due to closure? That was outside of the money that we already designated? Or is this just like a one-time thing specifically for the zoo only?
I'm gonna let Ms. Sullivan answer that question for you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Coonrod. This this money is is dedicated just to the zoo. This is not for additional businesses. Of course, we've done that through other means where we were able to. The zoo is an entity of the city, and the animals there are our assets. And this money is to, the zoo doesn't have operating dollars that would take them, a reserve that would take them through this entire time. They've they've laid staff off. They've had some assistance from the state for payroll. They've applied for loans. And they've been able to piece together what they can to to continue their operations as much as possible. But this is for feeding of the animals, the city asset.
Okay, thank you, Mar, for explaining that. And then one last thing, Chair. The resolution authorizing the Human Service Officers to extend and increase the purchase order for Gare, the equities. Now, is that just the additional amount? What is that needed for? Is that part of the questions that the mayor had them to work on, to dive deeper in? Is this just a continuation of the study prior to they, till we receive the information that come out of that study or?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, yes, sir. I'd be glad to. Gare helps us with training for our internal staff. This is equity training for internal staff, and we'll be glad to to expand on that with a number of staff who have been trained and and what will continue to happen with this training. But I think that you're thinking of questions that might have been asked by the mayor with relation to the disparity study. And that is a, yeah, that's a different. They're all related and in the equity work that we're doing in general through through city government and for our city, but but they are two different things.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Yeah, is this to do with, I know I emailed you about that presentation that Stacy had done a while ago. Is this connected to that? Or again, is something totally different?
It is different. That's that's another piece. So this is, again, just the internal city employees piece. So the the presentation that Stacy did was was about economic mobility and building mobility for all of the residents of Chattanooga. And then the disparity study is a third, third piece, a third leg of that stool, so to speak. Disparity study helps vendors who are doing business with the city to be able to to be on more equal footing for all, with all vendors with the city. So we're we've we've taken this approach to to equity, to look at all the different areas of our life within the city and have all these different tools that we're doing it with.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And do you have an idea of calendar date as to when we will, the council will be updated on that mobile mobility plan and study that Stacy spoke about? I know it was different. It was different phases.
It was, it was. I don't have that right now. Kerry Hayes may have more of an update for you, and I'll ask him to get that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All of that will will change a lot with COVID, unfortunately, but is needed more now than ever.
Great. Thanks again.
Any other questions for Ms. Sullivan before we let her go? Okay, I see no hands. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Okay, as we leave this portion of our agenda, we'll move into Public Works and Transportation Committee. Let me again remind the council, we do need a pretty important strategic, I mean, attorney-client privileged meeting. So please make sure you keep your questions as short as possible as we move through this rather long committee agenda. We'll now call the Public Works and Transportation Committee to order with no objections. The minutes will stand as read. Madam Clerk, let's go into resolutions for Tuesday, May the 12th. 7G, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number W20004201 to Nabco Electric Company Incorporated of Chattanooga, Tennessee, Storm Station One, Replacement and Motor Control Center for a contract amount of $536,410 plus a contingency amount of $53,650 for an amount not to exceed $590,060.
Councilwoman Coonrod, is that a previous hand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I see no hands. Council, make sure you have your hand up on an item so that I can notice. 7H, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Chattanooga Christian School for the award of the city's green grants program for a total project cost of $110,000.
All right, I see no hands. 7I, please.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one final for Complete Demolition Services LLC of Carrollton, Georgia, relative to contract number Y15008202, Avondale Youth and Family Development Center Building Abatement and Demolition for an increased amount of $52.45 to release the remaining contingency amount of $9,947.55 for a revised contract amount of $103,300.
Okay. I see no hands. Jay, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into year four of a possible five-year agreement with Material Matters Incorporated for professional services related to the bio solids data management system and all services listed therein for an amount not to exceed $67,750.
Let me look at one thing. Mr. Holland?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I see that your hand is up. Have you got something to add, sir?
I only put my hand up to be unmuted in the case that there were questions, sir.
Got you. Thank you. All right. Kay, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the State of Tennessee, Hamilton County, and Tennessee Interstate Conservancy to maintain landscaping improvements to the downtown interchange, changes of the roadway known as Highway 127 between the intersection of Interstate 24 and Old Giotti Bridge as a pilot for the beautification of the interstate highway system by the State of Tennessee with the city's annual contribution amount not to exceed $62,500 for each fiscal year.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I see that we have some representative from the Tennessee Interstate Conservancy wanting to give us a little bit more information about this really great initiative that they're doing. So Mr. Vice Chairman, if you could, I see Jane Bowen, who is the Executive Director. So Jane is, you would like to speak?
Mr. Vice Chair, bring Ms. Bowen up, please. Ms. Bowen, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. I just want to say thank you. Neil Thomas is sick, so I am naturally gonna step in. But I want to thank Councilwoman Carol Burr. She sits on our board. And Councilman Oglesby is, he attends many of our committee meetings, and it's his district. And then I also want to thank Councilman Ledford because he has done an amazing job on our PR brochures on the side. So if anybody has any questions, I'll do the best I can. I know that we have pretty tightly wrapped up a contract that we need to get to the state in time so that they can incorporate it in their plan as they finish up for hopefully fall or winter planning. So.
Okay, Councilman Oglesby, any follow-up?
No, they had just sent me an email requesting that they would like to have a few words. This is really a great initiative that Judge Neil Thomas has has privately taken upon himself. And it's really set in a standard that's starting to be emulated across the rest of the state. And I want to thank, this is District 7, I want to thank Councilwoman Burr, who has been serving on this committee from the outset for her input. So that that's all I have. So we can carry on. Thank you.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Bowen, can you talk a little bit about the private partnership component of this as well?
Sure, we've got, the the way the contract reads is city will put in one-fourth, the county will put in one-fourth, and then Tennessee Interstate Conservancy will do one-half of the funds. And so we have begun having private funding come in. Lindhurst, Benwood, and then we are about to do a public campaign. People have automatically gone on our website and said, hey, I want to give $100. So money is starting to come in, and we're ramping up. Of course, COVID hasn't been our friend for the past month or so. But we hope to have everything in place and ready to go. And we've got a we'll have a maintenance contract, Tennessee Interstate Conservancy, and a landscape contractor will have a contract between ourselves that will monitor it. And that should, we're looking at roughly $250,000, give or take, for the first year. And that would have somebody on site Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Landscaping were needed, mowing were needed, cleaning up trash were needed. So those two intersections look amazing at all times.
Councilwoman, good, Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you. So with this sort of the funding coming out of the city budget, would this not be included with the bid that's downtown that's supposed to do the landscaping and everything like that?
It's my understanding, and Councilman Oglesby can clarify this for me, but yeah, I think it ends at the freeway. So it does not actually incorporate the freeway itself.
Yeah, that is correct.
And then, so will this same pilot be implemented in other areas where the highway goes through District Six, District Five, District Four, other areas where we be able to have landscaping and all those things in those other areas? I mean, I think it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong, but I would like to see the contract with the city. I mean, it's the first that we've heard about it, that we're gonna be entering into an agreement to provide $62,500. But we had so much to say as a council when a learning institution for our kids came forth with a campaign making contributions to donate, and that was the Creative Discovery Museum downtown. So I'm just, I get it. We need to have a beautiful intersection, but our kids need to have the opportunity to learn as well how, why we couldn't do both, why we couldn't make a donation there. I understand Carol Burr is on the on the board. That's perfectly fine. Erskine has been to several meetings. Great. However, we have other, I just gotta mention it, Ms. Bowen, we have other areas in our in our city that we're not even getting the work that the city's supposed to do to our roles in, you know, in the city. They're not getting paid. They're not getting the beautification that the city's supposed to take care of now. And here it is, we're saying we're gonna give $62,500 for interstate highway system. But thank you for your efforts. I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate your concern. We've been working on this for three years. And we've had a lot of input from a lot of places within the city, including Creative Discovery Museum, who's very much on board. Downtown, including the aquarium and and anywhere from Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, have thought that this is a great way to introduce our city as we have so much tourism. It's a great economic development opportunity. And from there, to to answer, when you started, yes, we are starting with downtown and working our way out. We've already had Representative Esther Hilton contact me yesterday desiring to get together and do Exit One. So we also have a gateway into Tennessee. We have Memphis, Knoxville, and Clarksville, who have been very much on board, starting it in their cities. They get the minutes and notes from our meetings. And so it it seems to be kind of a statewide effort to bring back pride and taking care of our interstates.
Councilwoman Burr?
So Jade said it very well. We've been working for about three years. Actually, this hasn't been a city project. It's been a state project. And throughout this, we've talked about all the various ingresses and egresses and fixing them up. They're very much based on the success of this one. One of the things the city wanted to be very clear about was that if the state were going to do this, then we didn't want to be responsible totally for keeping it up. And a lot of work has gone into raising private funds, getting other governments to participate. So that's our small part of it. I'm really excited about it because if this pilot works the way we think it's gonna work, we're a model. Jane, you're being modest. It's a model for Memphis, and it's a model for Knoxville. They're coming here and looking at what we're doing. So we we promised that the city would not be having to to underwrite all of it, but just a very small portion. And the private community has come up, oh, full blast, to help make this what is turning out to be for economic development that will help the rest of the city, particularly the downtown areas. And Erskine, you want to say more, you may want to say more about that. I feel this is a very right thing to do.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, no, I I agree with you. And I think all has been said. It's the fact that, you know, it's it started out privately. It is privately. You know, we have the county involved. We have the state involved. So this is just not a downtown project. You know, we have a lot of public and private entities that are really participating in this. And as was said earlier, this is going to be a pilot that's going to affect not only our area, but other places across our state that we will not be funding, but other entities in those areas will be doing it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowen, for being here this afternoon.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jane.
We now need to move, Madam Clerk, to next week, Tuesday, May the 19th. We now need to move, Madam Clerk, to next week, Tuesday, May the nineteenth, ordinance is first reading six A, six B, please.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a sewer easement in the eight thousand to eighty-two hundred block of Shalford Road on property located at tax map number one four nine N A zero zero seven through zero one zero is detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
Okay, no questions.
I have nothing, Council, nothing, Chairman.
Thank you. Under Resolution seven D, please.
Resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Wright Brothers Construction Company Incorporated of Charleston, Tennessee, relative to contract number D one eight zero zero two two zero one, gravity sewer relocation, former Harriet Tubman home site for an increased amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and ten cents for a revised contract amount of one million two hundred and sixty thousand ninety-nine dollars and ten cents plus a contingency amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for an amount not to exceed one million three hundred and eighty thousand ninety-nine dollars and ten cents.
Councilwoman Cunroth.
Um, this is in District Eight, but I do want to say I can't wait for this to happen, for the relocation of the sewer and in the actual building of the new Palm Plant, Plant, because it's going to spur economic development, not just for the Harriet Tubman area, but for the city of Chattanooga. And we're going to have some great flowers as well, not donated by the city of Chattanooga, but by the citizens that's around the area.
Councilman Ledford.
Just real quick, Mr. Holland, if you're still on, can you remind me of the dollar amount that this project was going to cost probably about three and a half to four years ago?
Sir, I recall that it was several million dollars. I don't recall the exact amount. But it was, we were able to engineer around several of the initial problems. And this change order is where we're intersecting an unknown stormwater pipe.
Very good. Well, I know that it was an extreme amount. I remember before even the, the elections and this is, I'm just flabbergasted. Joe, great work on this. Just great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands. Seven E, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing payment to Sand Tech Environmental Incorporated for three years for Bradley County or Ray County landfill disposal of bio-solids sludge and other special waste for a total amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Um, Justin, I know we have several contracts we would like to get before, telling about this kind of, what are they asking of the, we deliver our tracks to the location, bringing their tracks to somewhere else, to where it works.
Councilman Gilbert, your, your audio is very difficult to make out, but I will explain the item on the Agenda E. This is for disposal of bio-solids sludge and other types of non, other types of debris that cannot be disposed of. Otherwise, we can't take them to a transfer station and they cannot be land-applied. So that does happen at the treatment plant where we get grit and other types of items that need to be hauled directly to a landfill. And this is for a contract with two different landfills, Bradley County and Ray County landfill for bio-solids sludge. They are both, they both have special waste permits that have already been previously set up for the city of Chattanooga to haul this special type of waste to those landfills where they can be directly installed. Can you repeat your question? I believe this is just for the disposal. So this is just for it being installed into the landfill. This, the city or another contractor, Jeff Rose, I believe, he's our wastewater systems director, is on the call. And if that's a question you need, I can ask Jeff to join.
He don't care if I was going last night, there's several contractors, you know. But my contract's full, no contract's full, so.
What else?
Then one coming, um, it was kind of a few, so I want to make sure who's installed, who's ended up.
I, I still have, having a difficult time making out your question, but Mr. Rose just informed me that we haul the material to the landfill, if that answers your question.
Councilman Gilbert, can I make a suggestion, since you're having so much trouble with your audio? This is on for next week's agenda. Do you think maybe, and we'll go over it in next week's agenda in our three thirty, could you maybe email Justin your question and then we'll take the time next week to, to go over that? Will that work? Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's do seven E, please. Well, I'm sorry, that was seven E, correct?
Yes, sir.
Seven F.
A resolution authorizing the renewal of year three of a five-year term for the on-call blanket contracts for professional services for the Support of Wastewater Capital Improvements Program, contract number W eighteen zero zero one, for the nineteen consultant firms listed in this resolution that submitted qualifications in the six different categories per their qualification package in the amount of thirteen million one hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven.
Okay. I see no hands. G, please.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number three for Jacobs Engineering Group, relative to contract number W seventeen zero zero six one zero one, program management for consent decree implementation, a consent decree project for the renewal of year four of a five-year program in the amount of three million four hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and twelve cents for a revised contract amount of nine million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Any questions on this? Councilman Gilbert, is that a existing hand from previous?
Yes, previous.
Okay. Okay. I see no questions. Madam Clerk, if you would read H and I together, and I think Mr. Holland has some comments on these two items, please.
Okay, and that's, should I just say blank for when, whether there's a blank?
Yep, yep. Unless you've got a crystal ball.
Okay. A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number E two zero 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 eight two zero one to blank for disaster debris collection and disposal contract for a contract amount of blank plus a contingency amount of blank for an amount not to exceed blank. A resolution, and I, a resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number E two zero 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 nine two zero one to blank for disaster debris collection and disposal monitoring contract for a contract amount of blank plus a contingency amount of blank for an amount not to exceed blank.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, sir. This is, the reason that you see these blanks is because the bids will not be due until Thursday. We are requesting, Mr. Chairman, that this be allowed to push until the May twenty-sixth agenda. If the chairman would allow us to do that, I think it will give us enough time to evaluate the bids and provide you enough time to see the totals on your agenda.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the council? If not, we will push these two items to the twenty-sixth of May. We're all good?
Very good.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Holland. We do have one item in transportation. I don't know that it's going to be necessary to bring up Mr. Bailey, but Madam Clerk, if you would read seven L, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chattanooga Department of Transportation to erect commemorative secondary street name signs on North Orchard Knob Avenue from Citico Avenue to Milne Street, designating said portions of North Orchard Knob Avenue as H H Wright Memorial Parkway.
I'm going to poke the bear. Councilwoman Burr, you've been quiet this whole time. Anything?
No, I'm just super happy about this. Ms. Willie McClendon and the whole crew over there off Citico and Churchville, they've just been doing a wonderful job. So I just want to tell them thank you. And it's an honor to, to just show honor and praise to Mr. Wright. He's a wonderful man, was a wonderful man.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments before we leave our public works in transportation? If not, we'll adjourn public works and transportation. Councilman Oglesby, I will now turn the floor over to you for economic and community development, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. At this time, if there's no objection on the approval of the minutes. Okay, we'll, we'll get started with resolutions. Madam Clerk, let's start, go with seven A.
A resolution approving the short-term vacation rental application number nineteen S T V R zero zero one eight four for property located at fourteen twenty Madison Street.
Okay, Councilwoman Burr, you good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That was resolutions for today. Let's move on now to next week's resolution for Tuesday, May nineteenth. Seven A, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a third agreement to premises use agreement and option to renew in substantially the form attached with Rivermont Youth Athletic Association Incorporated for the use of property located on a portion of tax map number one one eight K A zero zero nine at ten ninety-six Lepton Drive for an additional term of one year.
Thank you very much. Let's move on now to seven B.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a third amendment to premises use agreement and option to renew in substantially the form attached with Lakeside Youth Association Incorporated for the use of property located at tax map number one two nine C A one, I'm sorry, zero one eight for an additional term of one year.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert, you good? Hey, I don't see him. Okay, now we'll move on to, that concludes this part of our Economic and Community Development Committee. Now we have a presentation on C D B G funding proposals. Who has the, who would take that, Donna or Richard? Ms. Williams, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Get them both, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Double duties.
Richard, Donna, are you with us?
Yeah, they, they're muted right now. Okay.
I'm, okay, can you hear me now, Council?
We can.
We got you.
Okay, thank you very, very much for allowing us to present today. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I know we're pressed for time, so I will be as brief as possible. First of all, much of this information you guys have seen because I presented it in February. However, our requirements for HUD is that we keep you updated on a particular schedule. And we do have a bit of new information to share with you. And I want to acknowledge the work of Sandra Gober, who is the manager of community development, and her staff for doing all the meetings and surveys, et cetera, to get us to this point. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I won't read this to you, but basically, we're here to update you on the information that we'll share with you in February. Next, please. So the consolidated plan, essentially, there are three things that we focus on. You're all familiar with home funds, C D B G funds, and you may be lesser familiar with the emergency solutions grants. But the consolidated plan, the process for planning, applying, reporting, all of that, for all of those funding sources, that is what we have to put together for a five-year consolidated plan. And as the name says, we have to do this every five years. It's a requirement of HUD. For the year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, it was originally, we would be at this point, we would submit the plan to HUD in May of twenty twenty. But of course, because of COVID, many things are delayed, and this is one of them. HUD has given municipalities an extended time to present our plan. And so we will be presenting our plan in July. Next slide, please. This is a brief history of the funding. And if you will, please read left to right. Those are each of the five-year periods. You can see that the, there have been decreases in funding year over year. And you'll see those amounts in the far right-hand column. That last row is anticipated estimated funding for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four period. However, those are estimates pre-COVID, that, you know, it's kind of hard to predict where we'll be now that we're dealing with the pandemic. But we are at the moment working on the anticipated numbers for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four that you see in red at the bottom of that slide. Next slide, please. Um, this is a bit of the process that tells you what we go through with citizens and to establish the priorities, how we set the priorities, resources, that could be money, individuals, organizations, et cetera. And then from those priorities, we set the goals and we run the programs and then we take a look at it, our outcomes, to see how successful and effective the programs have been over time. And that's what that, that circle demonstrates. Next slide, please. This is particularly important because our team started working on the consolidated plan in earnest back in the fall. We are always in the process of getting input and gathering data from many sources, but particularly from our clients, that would be the citizens we serve and our partners. And those would be the organizations and entities that serve those clients every day. So on the left-hand side, you see some of the sources that we use to gain input. And on the right-hand side, you'll see different mechanisms by which we get that information. Next, please. Uh, this slide gives you a partial idea of some of the activities that we did over time. I sent you all a full spreadsheet back in February, I didn't want to put it all here, that outlined all the activities and resources, sources, that we use to gather the data. On the right-hand side, you'll see a very, very comprehensive list of the different reports and data sets that we use to verify some of the information that we receive from citizens. So not everything that citizens say are needed are really the greatest of priority. So we vet that against the data that we, we have access to. And on the right-hand side of the screen, that's just a partial listing of that data. Next, please. Okay, so it's kind of hard to have eight priorities. The number eight kind of dictates, negates, rather, the use of the word priorities. But we do have eight priorities that we are holding steadfastly to. These are priorities that were devised as a result of the various communications that we had with stakeholders. Again, these would be clients as well as partners that are producing the services. These are the eight areas that will drive our, excuse me, our activities for this five-year period. Next, please. And if I'm going too fast, of course, I'll, I'll back up. Now, these are, these are the indicators that we hold very closely to. Keep in mind, this is also for a five-year period. For example, one of the categories is increased affordable housing opportunities. You guys have been so very supportive of all of our efforts to, to produce and improve affordable housing. Each of these sections will have something related to affordable housing in one way or the other. And over on the outcome side, you'll see over the five years, for instance, the first line, fifty homeowner units added. Of course, the city does not own any housing, but we partner with landlords, developers, who do produce and own housing, one of which in the category of fifty homeowner units added would be Habitat. And then we have a list of private developers who build houses for low to mild income households. So it's a variety of private and public money that come together to produce all of the indicators that you will see on this slide. Next, please. And this slide. Great. And then the next slide, thank you. The community development action plan. So there, there are two things that we will be bringing before you. We will be, be bringing before you the complete five-year consolidated plan as well as the action plan. Typically, we're bringing the action plan before you, but every five years, we bring both because of the timing and the required. both because of the timing and the requirements of HUD. You will see, uh, three columns there, ESG. Typically, uh, this money has been available to the city directly from HUD. This year, it is not. The money is available through THDA, Tennessee Housing Development Agency. However, THDA is allowing cities and, and nonprofits to respond to an RFP requesting funding. We have done that. We've made application. We will see if we are awarded the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we requested. The middle column and the far right column, home and CDBG, we have, um, been confirmed to receive those amounts from HUD. HUD has already notified us that we are going to be receiving one-point-two-oh-four, one-point-two-four-one in home and CDBG funds for the upcoming year. The home funds, we have what we refer to as an open RFP, meaning we don't, um, issue an RFP on a particular day where it opens and then it closes on another day, uh, because development doesn't work that way. So if a developer, a qualified developer, has a project that they would like to seek funding for, they are able to send in a proposal that meets the guidelines of the RFP, and we, uh, review those proposals as they are submitted. That way, we've, uh, been able to increase both the quantity and the quality of the RFPs we're receiving from, um, various folks to be used, um, for income restricted housing through that, by using the home funds. We also have the CDBG money. That money, we had an RFP out that was posted on February the sixth, and, um, you will see the responses to the RFP in the next slide. So the, the, um, we had, I don't know how many, I can't, I don't know how many of those are, but, um, these are the entities that submitted a proposal requesting funding, CDBG funding, from us as a result of the February RFP that was issued. You will see their request amount in that left column. The Citizens Advisory Board met a week ago Friday, and you will see in the far right-hand column, the amount of funding that the Citizens Advisory Board is recommending to us, um, and we, in turn, are recommending it to you. Again, we'll have a full presentation of this later. The various programs and entities that we would like to fund with our upcoming allocation of CDBG. That, that would be all the things highlighted in the kind of pink, peachy, uh, background. Those are entities that submitted proposals. If you see a dash, that means that that particular proposal was not recommended by the board, Citizens Advisory Board and staff, uh, did not recommend that we fund those. You will see, um, an amount, in some cases, that's smaller than the amount requested, but, um, the, that's a case where we really wanted to fund that entity, but it may have been a portion of their application, their proposal, that we, uh, did not want to fund or feel like we could, could fund. So those are, that will come before you. Please note at the bottom, you will see dollar amounts that are not highlighted in peach or pink. The first one being community development admin. Everybody in the community development staff, none of those staff members are funded through general fund dollars. Our federal money allows for a portion of what we receive every year to go toward admin, and that's the amount this year that will go toward the salaries and benefits of the staff in community development. We also have the Section 108 loan. That's money from HUD. That money may sound familiar because that's one of the funding sources for the COVID Small Business Program to assist small businesses during this time. We borrowed that money from HUD. It has, uh, interest, so we are allowed, however, to use the money we receive from HUD to pay that interest. That's what that line item is. Public infrastructure, uh, we typically allocate two-hundred-thousand dollars to CDOT for sidewalks and qualifying areas. CDOT's great. They really learned how to, uh, determine if a project is eligible for, um, CDBG funds or not per the federal regs. They do a good job with that. And then the, um, last one is housing assistance and preservation. Those are funds that we keep in-house for different opportunities, uh, that come up throughout the year. So that is what we will be presenting in detail to you later in the year, in June, I believe it is. Next, please. And then this is a condensed timeline of what we have to do in order to submit our five-year plan to HUD. And we are, you'll see where some of the dates have been stricken through. That's because due to COVID, we, there were things that were unable to, we were unable to accomplish because couldn't have public meetings, et cetera. So, uh, again, HUD has allowed recipients to push back some of the dates for, um, the activities that lead up to the submission of our five-year plan. And I know that was quick. We will get copies of this to Nicole. Uh, I am always available if any of you would like to, um, have an opportunity, you know, we can sit down and go over any part of the program, the slides, the whole thing, whatever's convenient for you. Uh, and with that, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to, uh, take any questions if anybody has any.
Sure.
Mr. Vice Chair, let's go ahead and take down the split screen. There we go.
There we go. Okay, I, at this time, I don't see any, any hands, so, uh...
I'm trying to raise mine.
Oh, okay. Uh, Councilman Coonroy.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilwoman, can you go ahead and put your video back on, please?
Well, I mean, I thought we was all muted since I can't see their face, but that's fine. Um... So it's just council members who have to have their faces unmuted? Like, everybody participating don't have to unmute? Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't read that in the proposal from Gober to lead, but, okay. Um, and the, and the salaries that you're saying that the admin are getting paid a three-ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars, is there an increase in anybody's salary that's coming out, that's included in that amount?
No. Everybody in the, um, community development staff, on their staff, um, follows the same pay grades, benefits, et cetera, as the city. So the only way that any of those staff members would receive a raise would be, uh, if everybody in the city received a raise, so no.
Okay, and so with the extra additional funds with the housing assistance, what exactly do you preserve that money to do with housing? Is it rental utilities or?
Uh, it varies. For instance, uh, sometimes we'll have a, um, we may have a, um, demolition project, a house or, or building or something, a residential that falls under the CDBG guidelines that needs to be demolished, that would be an emergency demolition, that money could be used for that. If we had a project that surfaced that where a landlord or developer was producing a project and it needed some additional subsidy, we would use it for that. We could potentially, and in fact, we, we, uh, one of the things we may be doing is, of course, we did not, nobody could anticipate COVID, no one could anticipate a tornado. So we reserve funds for unexpected things such as that.
Hey, thank you. I don't have any more questions pertaining to her presentation, but I got a question about an approval that we made.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman, is it related to economic and community development?
Of course it is.
Okay. Do you have the mic?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Donna. When we approve the funding for, um, to be used for rental assistance and, um, utilities, are you able to provide counsel with an update on that? Like, how many people apply? Are you able to break it down by districts for each, uh, grant that was?
Uh, we had, we, we cut the application process off last Tuesday at a thousand, so we have had more than, we've had approximately a thousand people who have applied. Frankly, no, we haven't been tracking it by district. We can, we'll be happy to do that. We have staff who can, uh, we can pull off tasks to do that. We are at the moment going through to determine folks who are ineligible, those would come out of the one thousand. We've discovered that some people have repeatedly applied. We would take those out of the thousand. Uh, we have some folks who are, uh, not city residents, we'll take them out of the one thousand. So what we're doing right now is every person that applied received an email from my staff, and they also received at least one phone call, excuse me, some of them, many phone calls, from my staff to let them know that an application has been sent to them and that they, um, should be gathering the required documentation so that they could submit a full packet for consideration. We are, um, waiting for the, there's a portion of the process where a landlord verifies what the tenant owes, so we're waiting for some landlords to send that, uh, form back. And I do want to say that, uh, my teams worked really, really, really hard and a lot to get this process pulled together, to make sure that the process conforms with federal guidelines, um, and also to make sure that we are being as responsible as possible with the public funds that we're being using, that we're using, and also to get that money to the landlords as quickly as possible. So we, we simplified the process, um, quite a lot so that the tenants would not have to collect just a whole bunch of paperwork. So only the essential paperwork that's required by HUD is being, um, collected by the tenants, and then we, um, have someone, a couple someones, who are reviewing the applications. The applications, if everybody, if, if all their information is submitted at the same time, it takes, um, less than thirty minutes to approve an application, and then we send it on to the landlord to verify that what the tenant said is owed, is what the landlord said is owed, and then we're, um, we have one more step and we're ready to cut checks.
Hey, thank you, 'cause I was, I didn't know it was gonna be this lengthy of a process 'cause it was presented to us like the need was urgent, like, right now.
The need is urgent.
We needed to get, but it's still the same process as what the city is going through. It's taken weeks for people to get. So have we transferred any funding to CNE to make the payments, or it's just waiting on people to be approved at this point?
What, what we're waiting on is for applicants to submit full packets. If we were to receive a full packet today, it would be approved tomorrow, and then we would be waiting for the landlord to send that information. Once that happens, then we authorize CNE to cut, uh, checks. They cut checks twice a week. They use their funds, and then they submit to us for reimbursement. So, uh, i- it's very unfortunate that, uh, in a government, it just happens to be part of what we do, in a government, there are processes that can't be eliminated, especially when we're using federal money. So, uh, th- this will be, as far, as long as I've worked for the city, this will be the fastest turnaround we've had for any program that is utilizing federal money, uh, it's, and HUD money, as many speak specifically to HUD money.
Okay, so with the initial thousand people that applied, it was just saying, maybe, hey, we need help. It wasn't like, fill out the packet, he'll go to application. I'm just trying to understand.
It was not. No, ma'am. So, uh, people were going to the city site, the COVID site. It took forty-five seconds. They would write their name, their address, they would tell us, um, what their need were, was, and then they would, within twenty-four hours, be contacted by someone on my staff to make sure that they were eligible, right? And then they, once the, once you all approved them, the funds, which you did two weeks ago today, you approved the funds, and then we started sending applications, and, uh, folks have been collecting their information. Some people have submitted full packets, and they've been processed, and I think we have thirteen people that are approved, that the tenants approved, and we're waiting on their land, their landlords to send in their, their forms. So it's been two weeks since the program was funded, and some folks have jumped right on it. I would also say, and this is, uh, uh, real comforting for mankind, that we have many people that we've called and been in communication with, and they said, hey, I got my tax return, I got my stimulus check, I got my unemployment, um, and I got my stimulus from the state. I'm good, I don't need your assistance, please save that money for someone who really doesn't need it. So we will have folks who will fall off of the one thousand list because they're no longer in need of assistance from the government.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I don't have anything else. I probably just give somebody else about it. Thank you, though.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Seeing no other hands, uh, that will conclude this, uh, part of economic and community development of our meeting. Mr. Chairman, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Great job, Councilman. Mr. Vice Chair, it's my understanding that we need to log off and log back on for our attorney-client, or can you just take the attendees out?
No, sir, we're, we're gonna have to log on or log off and then log back in, everybody that's currently in here at this moment.
Okay. All right. If everyone would log off, let's end this meeting and then log immediately back on, please. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.